All right, thanks. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson, Capler.
Here.
Cole Carney.
Yeah.
Ormsby.
Here.
Satterfield, Stoltenberg, Wenland.
Here. Okay, we had minutes from the last meeting, September 20th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the September 20th, 2023 minutes as submitted.
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 20th, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, the minutes from September 20th are approved. All right, good evening and welcome everyone to the Plan and Zone Commission meeting. We are a seven-member usually. We're short a few people tonight, but we do have a quorum. We're four of us tonight, appointed by the mayor and the city council. We are a recommending body, so everything we do here tonight is a recommendation. Rezoning, land use, preliminary plant site plan, and plan unit development. I see a number of folks in the audience, so we would love your input at the appropriate time. I will ask for comments from the office, and there's a podium to my right and to your left back there, and if you would go back there to present your comments, we'd appreciate it, so we can pick it up on the record. And with that, we will begin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do two cases at once for you, if it pleases the commission, 23071 and 23068. I would like to present as one case, because it really is one case. Again, the case numbers 23071 and 23068 are at 42928 Street. This is going to be a future land use map amendment and a rezoning, and those actions relate in correlation directly to those numbers. So 71 is the future land use map amendment, and 68 is the rezoning. Just orient you here, 28th Street dead ends into the property in question, and then 28th, I'm sorry, 28th and Half Street dead ends into the property in question, and then 28th Street is along the western boundary. You're going to remember, if you look back in your memory bank, about three years ago, we had a similar project here. I'm going to get to that in a second. The applicant is Webster Properties LLC. Their request is to amend the future land use map and rezone the property. An undeveloped lot currently exists at this location, proposed use as a contractor condo, contractor should be contractor condo. The current future land use is urban light intensity or urban low intensity at this location, and the proposed future land use is going to be community commercial. Just a real kind of sidestep on future land use maps and what they are. They are not legal documents as far as like the boundaries. They're actually fuzzy maps, term of art. Is that the actually correct term of art? So one could argue that even in this case, the future land use map already intimates that community commercial would be okay here, because it's surrounded by community commercial, and because it's a fuzzy map, you could easily get to that decision point. But we wanted to bring this by you and get your reaction to it as well, and not just rely on staff's opinion. So it is staff's opinion that going from the ULI to the community commercial to support then commercial rezoning decisions is appropriate. It may not even be necessary to do this step, but I think it's good for the record, and I think it's good to have your input on to this decision as well. And then we get to the current zoning. Currently zoned R2, so right now, a person could build an R2-style small lot home in this location, which would be a little bit odd, because it is surrounded by commercial properties. And even this R2 piece right here really is not being used as R2. It's a standalone kind of garage storage facility. So I think some of the decisions that are coming forward are going to be pretty self-evident. They propose to go to C3, like the properties to the east and to the south, and honestly, like the use that is actually occurring on this R2 to the west. To do that, again, they need that future land use map to be updated, and then they need the rezoning to go to C3 to allow their proposed use of contractor condo. Here's the plat and question, kind of an interesting plat here. Couple features I would point out is it's a flag lot. It's actually flagged off 28th Street, and then there is dead end of 28th and Half Street, but the pavement of 28th and Half Street doesn't actually touch the property. The right-of-way does, but the pavement doesn't. That might be something for city planners and city engineer and the property owner to figure out in the future. But my suspicion is, and I'll show you this on a future drawing, is that they'll likely make 28th and Half Street kind of their main interest, and keep that flag lot just for, you know, an extra point of egress, if you will. This does show some setbacks off of the front yard of 28th Street, if you will. Again, those setbacks would be modified if a rezoning were to occur, because it would be a new zoning district, and there would be a different setback. So don't get too caught up in that. Just an interesting plat, thought I'd share with you. No other real obvious constraints on the lot. Got this access easement here for the flag, and then, of course, they are allowed to access the property from the dead end of 28th and Half Street. Why wouldn't they be able to? This was planted in 2017, so, you know, not too long ago. Here's a concept plan. We're talking a 50 by 45-foot building, two contractor condos, ostensibly divided basically in half, so the whole 40, 50 by 45 building here facing south, if you will, your main entry coming here, using asphalt to provide that dry dustless surface, split into two condos, and you still have some egress out the rear if they needed for whatever reason, fire safety, moving storage, whatever. And then they will maintain their flag lot status off 28th Street. They're showing updated setbacks on this document, so assuming the rezoning were to occur, then those setbacks would be updated, and those are the correct setbacks in staff's opinion. And just so you know, the main entrance will be off 28th and Half Street. That makes more sense to me. If you know the topography of this area, you're on a curb, you're up a hill. A lot easier just to drive straight into your property and back straight out than to have to try and make that turn, especially if you have like vehicles with trailers or something like that that a contractor might have. And this is not an elevation of the proposed project, but it is an elevation of a very similar project that happened literally feet away, adjacent at 428, 28, 428, 28 and Half Street. I don't know if I can say 28 any more times during this presentation. It's a contractor condo. It was approved by this board and approved by city council in 2020. It's a similar use to what's being proposed here, so I'm giving you a pattern of development to consider in your decision. So we have a pattern of development that has occurred, and I think that might weigh on your decision-making here tonight. Staff recommendation for both cases is positive. Staff would recommend approval of both cases. As the staff report shows, the proposed changes in future land use and the zoning are consistent with our code, our comprehensive plan, our downtown master plan. Now, this is just outside of the actual border of the downtown master plan, but it does fall within the overall study area, and we feel that this type of reuse would be comparable to both our comp plan and our downtown master plan, even though it's kind of on the fringe. Feels like your downtown, not quite downtown. And I did note there's a recent pattern of development that is very similar to this, and I think that recent pattern of development would support both of these decisions being approved tonight. I would remind the chairman that this is the type of case where we do need to have the official GAVL public hearing, and at least there I could help you with that process, but I think you got the cheat sheet in front of you.
I do, in big font, too.
I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mark, for the presentation, and this is when I usually look over and ask you if there's anything additional, but I'm sure if you asked yourself, you'd say you had it all, so we appreciate that. So this is when we need to ask if there is proof of publication for case 23071.
Yes.
There is proof of publication. We will officially open the public hearing, and at this point, I would ask for any public comment from the audience with regard to this case. Yes, sir? You get extra credit for going first.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I live at 429 and 28th Street.
Tell us your name.
Edgar Wyomar.
Okay.
We bought the land in 17, when this was like a month after this was proportioned out, because it was originally one piece. The thing, my concern is it has a north-south of 70 feet. It was my understanding, and according to the tax records for Scott County, it's 60 feet. So I don't know if that pertains to this. However, it would change the parameters of the size of the building you could have, I would presume. Bear with me, I don't do public speaking.
You're doing fine.
Is there a, just asking a question, is there a survey that's already been done, or is it going to be done? Because that's my concern, is that extra, like it says there's a flag, that flag is about 10 feet tall, or 10 feet north and south. So from what I read out of the Scott County treasure site, this is a 60 by 120 site, pretty much a rectangle directly behind the other property to the west.
I think he's got it blown up there a little bit, and I'm just reading off what I'm seeing. It looks like they're calling that width to be 10.87 feet of frontage on the west, and then it has a little bit of a dogleg back of, it looks like 15 or 16.46 feet, and I'm guessing what they called out, and I'm going to look at my engineer.
I'm actually looking at Scott County's website right now.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
It does measure at 70 feet, which matches what Mark has right there on that east property line. You can see that dimension.
70 points, yep.
Scott County breaks it down into two pieces. They call the main lot at 60 feet, and then they have a sublot under it that's 10 feet, so that would be that little jog to the west.
Okay.
So the total width is 70 feet.
So that 70 by 120 is the main box, if you will, and then they've got another small box for the stub going out.
So my concern then would be is my sheds, I think, within that 10 feet. Not the sheds very important, I'm just saying my sheds, I think it's right on that 10 feet. If we look at the picture.
Yeah, can we go back to the aerial on that, Mark? Oh, pull up the aerial.
Right up there to the far right, there we go. Such a beautiful building. My concern is, okay, so it's the first time I've bought a house. It's been a long time, trust me. So I'm concerned that in my, what are my rights as far as that's concerned? And I get the development's going to happen. That's not really my issue. My issue is that now I know the property line has changed. I'm asking, what's my, should I have to move the shed, or that's kind of, I bought it that way.
Well, there's, my usual lawyer is not here tonight, so we can't ask the technical legal question, which he would tell you. I can't tell you, because I'm not representing you, but I can give you directionally feedback. So, and the developer's here, too, and I don't know if you've got a survey, Scott, with that, so we can maybe nip that in the bud, but it, the lines that the county shows up and see here are not necessarily exactly where the lines always lay on the ground, but go ahead, maybe you can help, Scott.
Yeah, Scott Webster.
Pull that mic up just a little bit, if you would. Yep, thanks.
Scott Webster, 26 Briarwood Lane, too, in Bettendorf. I believe it's either getting surveyed tomorrow. My engineer happens to actually be here for another case, but he believes it's getting surveyed tomorrow, and when it gets surveyed tomorrow, we'll be able to find out exactly whether or not that line's correct. I would agree. Sometimes the GIS isn't completely perfect, and we'll see where exactly that line is and how close it is to the shed at that point.
Good. So if, if by chance, the picture is representative of how actually it's surveys, then you would have what's called an encroachment issue. Your shed would be encroaching on Scott's lot, and then it raises other legal issues I won't delve into, and how long it's been there and things like that, but I would, step one, find out where the survey stakes go and where your shed actually lies in relation to those, and then take the next steps.
Okay, so, yeah. But the, not sure what a commercial condo is.
Well, it's similar to the picture Mark put up, and there's, if you go down like on the east side of Bettendorf, that's a good example of it. It's typically.
That's not far from our house either.
Yep. Typically, it's a smaller contractor, they, something they call them condo, even though they don't sell them, they could be for sale or for rent, and it's usually a small, either an electrician or plumber or other type of small contractor that would occupy a space like that.
And I think my other question is the address. I mean, I have the same exact address we're talking about here. So how is that, how would that be parsed out?
I don't know. Mark?
So the, right now, the lot is addressed at the lot of its previous record, if you will. When its structure goes up, there'll be a new address issued. That new address will most likely be issued off the main point of access, which in this case is going to be the 28 and a Half Street. So there will be a new address. That will be taking care for the planning and zoning department. We work with the fire department, police department, and also the postal service to make sure the address is issued correctly, but that, that address will get changed. We don't have a new address yet, because we don't have an approved plan and all those things that need to be approved first, so we're still using, we're using the address of record, but that is a valid point. The address will have to change.
Were you able to pick that up? Yeah.
And I think this is probably a question for future references, impact of the property based upon, you know, between residential and commercial. Sorry, between residential and commercial, is there going, like a privacy fence, but I think that's probably not in this case for this.
Can you address, Scott, what you're going to have on the adjoining property?
I think we would obviously work with the neighbor to whatever extent we can. Half of this condo is going to be me personally, so I'm there, I'll be there all the time. The oddity with this particular lot is, is the topography of the lot is going to create so the back building probably isn't even very far out of the ground. It's almost going to be kind of like a walkout built into a hill. So it's probably something we could do with the landscaping, whether that be on my property or allowing him, you know, and paying for some things if he wants to put some things on his property, as far as trees or bushes or something like that. That's, you know, I'm more than willing to work with the neighbor to try to make sure that we're good neighbors and taking care of that situation. So when we get to the site development plan, we'll definitely hit something with that, and I'll speak with him, get him my name and phone number, so that we can work with him to make sure that we're on the same page.
Great, thank you.
That covers all my questions.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Ryan Belk, Acxiom Consultants. I'll just add to that, as Scott mentioned, we'll be out tomorrow, if not by the end of this week, to survey, and we'll laugh and stake out those property corners, too, so you can see that, where those fall in place in the field, and see that with the shed, and we'll work with Scott with that.
Great, appreciate that, Brian. Okay, anyone else with regard to public comment regarding this case? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or discussions, comments by staff with regard, or sorry, commission with regard to this matter? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 23-071 and case 23-068.
We're just going to do the first one, just to, yep.
23-071, subject to staff recommendations. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-071, subject to staff recommendations. Can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Capler?
Yes.
Cole Carney?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do we have proof of publication for case 23-068?
Yes.
Thank you, we do. Then we will open a public hearing relative to case 23-068, and I will ask again if there is any comment with regard to this sister case from the audience. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions by the commission? Probably not on this one either. All right. Then I would take a motion for case 23068.
Chairman, I move to approve case 23-068, subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-068, subject to staff recommendations. Can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Capler?
Yes.
Cole Carney?
Yes.
Ormsby? Yes.
Wenland.
Yes. All right, thank you. They are both recommended for approval, which would take us to case 23-069.
Mr. Chairman, let me just get the slideshow loaded up here. This is going to be a very familiar case or subject to the commissioners here tonight, and so I'm very willing to do the whole show, the whole order. I have a slide deck prepared, if you want to do that, or if it pleases the commission, I can just cut to the chase. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, and your colleagues.
I'm going to look at everybody else, but I think we've given this case a thorough vetting over a period of many meetings, and if you have a short version, we would love to hear it.
Yes, sir. I will provide you the short version. Case 23069 is a final plat for Glenbrook Ridge, fourth edition. Going to skip a few slides here, but just orient yourself where you're at in town and the people that are watching. This is Dunsleyman Road in Glenbrook Circle South. The area in question is all these pretty colors here, and we've had some meetings about how we would like to see this replatted, and in those meetings, we've come up with some suggestions as staff, that they do things like reserve the floodway into outlots. That's most of this area down here, kind of the bottom of the anvil shape, if you will. Place any detention in outlots, and work out some type of encroachment agreement for Outlet F. For the most part, all that's been done. There is one question mark out there regarding to Outlet F. Not to lack of trying, let me tell you, they have been working diligently with the pipeline company, which is going, which is difficult enough just in normal life, but when they're undergoing a sale and transition of ownership, it's even more difficult. So the due diligence, the effort has been put forth by the applicant to meet that demand, but they can't, they can't produce it right now, just because of where the company is at within this transition, even to the point that they've had prior documents that were approved tacitly, if you will, under the old ownership, that they even have staff that are saying, we think this will get done, but we have to do other things right now, because we're being brought out, so.
Or priority, sure.
And I don't think it's really, I don't think the Outlet F is really a plating issue as much as it'll be a site development plan issue. So here's what a final plat would look like, and again, I think this, for the most part, meets the intention of this body and our city council. So we've got a lot of record as Lot 1 in this area here. We've got some stormwater shown in Outlet as Outlet A, then we have Outlet B reserved for floodway. Perfect, that's exactly what we asked. This kind of spike or key-shaped piece of property right along the edge, which does include the area where the pipeline is. They're still working on getting that encroachment agreement. It has happened in other places throughout the city. It's most likely they will be able to get that. So I don't think we need to hold this up relative to that right now. The plat is still correct and accurate per state law and city code. If they get that, that just means that as future site development plan, this ground comes into play for paving and parking. But from a plating standpoint, I'll look at the city engineer, I don't think there's anything else that needs to be noted.
No.
So I would say we have a plat that is ready to be reviewed by city council and move forward, and I would say, you know, recommend, not required here, will be that. If they want to use Outlet, the old Outlet F, they're going to have to get that with the pipeline. We're kind of agnostic on that. If they get it, great. If they don't, sorry. So we have a positive stack recommendation for the final plat. If they want to include Outlet F in any future site development plan, we're going to ask them to bring that documentation forward. And then just to kind of note procedurally here, because this one has transpired so differently, the preliminary plat and final plats will be presented to city council on November 7th, if my date is right, and if the encroachment agreement is in place by that time, staff would be happy to add that to the packet and update council. But again, the plats, both of them, the final plat and the preliminary plat, we're going to give them to council in one fell swoop, which is a little bit odd, but not illegal. We'll be doing that on November 7. And, you know, you have a positive staff recommendation. I have to answer any questions that there might be.
Power just went up.
Try to go back to the plat, if you want me to get up.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Questions and comments from the commission regarding this case?
Mark, we've talked about conditional zoning in the past, multiple occasions. You've used the word conditional in your recommendations. I don't think we can do a conditional final plat. I'm thinking procedurally, if we're going to make
Yeah, there, I don't think.
a motion, how do we, how do we frame that?
I would be comfortable with the commission if they thought appropriate to approve or recommend approval of the final plat as presented. It meets state law and city code. The information or the lack of information on how they'll be able to use Outlet F is really a site development plan question, in my opinion, and I think the plating is legal and appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't think you have a condition. It was more of a letting the applicant know that, hey, at that site development plan phase, you got some ground there that you want to use, great. The real decider on how you use that ground is not us, it's going to be that pipeline company.
And city council will have the same approach. If the agreement's in place by the 7th, they can approve it without a condition. Otherwise, it'll be subject to obtaining. That's still a site plan issue, as you note, though, right?
Yes, sir. I think the plat is ready to be approved by both bodies.
By both bodies, okay. So they note you said about it would be added to it, that would just be with city council?
Informationally, I'm just saying, we're willing as staff to, you know, these things have taken so long, we are, we are understanding of the applicant's position and how long this has taken, and I don't want to create another delay for them, so I want to get final plat, preliminary plat to council and get them approved. I think that's appropriate. And if we had a chance to talk about Outlet F, you know, at the 11th hour, I would be glad to include that in the packet. At the 11th hour, give me like the 8th hour or something.
Makes a much clearer picture, once you have that answered.
Right.
Okay.
Well, this is proof that if you lock people in a room together long enough, they can find out a way to agree. So I'm glad everybody put the effort forth, and it looks like we're going to get there, so appreciate that for, on both sites. Yep. Are we to a motion point, or, oh, audience, is there anyone in the audience with regard to this Ryan?
Mr. Chairman.
Brian.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, I was just, just going to reiterate really what Mark said, like he had noted, we've been, we've been talking diligently with Tanya and One Oak, who has merged with Magellan. So we do already have an existing encroachment easement on that development in two, three different places, so we're just working off that. She was trying to amend that existing agreement, actually, but because of the merger, they're going to set a new agreement. So we're well aware, and Mark's done a great job with telling us what we need to do to move forward with the site plan, and we'll continue that way.
Yeah, appreciate all your work getting here, too, so thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Ian.
Should we try again?
Let's do it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of case 23-069, subject to staff recommendations and conditions.
A second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-069, subject to staff recommendations and conditions. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, 23-069 is recommended for approval. And this is where we change seats, okay.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, first case, which one?
2312.
This is a case we've had earlier. It was deferred since about June, I think, is when we finally had made a decision to require an easement, essentially be attached to this lot and then go through this lot here to permit a connection for storm sewer. A applicant is switch homes, it's a 2570 Middle Road, and it is for a construction of a building to house office, retail, and also a restaurant. This is C2, those uses are permitted. If you look at the surrounding area, you have C1 to the east, you have R1 to the south, C2 throughout most of the area near Cumberland Square Mall, the bank is C2. If outdoor service were at one point with this restaurant, going to serve alcoholic beverages, there would be a provision that that would trip a requirement for a special use permit in the future. At the present, that is not in play, but if it were to occur, then that would change the scenario and the establishment, or any establishment serving outdoor beverages of alcoholic nature, that would, that would require then a special use permit. Land uses, pretty much you have golf course here with parks and open space, urban low intensity here in the R1 area. You have with the church, the public and semi-public use, and then urban medium intensity adjoining with the bank area, and then over here for this parcel, and then the majority, again, is in community commercial throughout most of this location. Two plats govern this location. The first one was Northwest Corners and that provides an access easement. It comes along and is tangential to what became Ewing Betendorf First Edition and the lot right here. And that's where access is permitted to this particular parcel is through the bank lot. And that is to have the fewest number of entry and exit points along Middle Road and, and particular so close to where Spruce Hills and Middle Road intersect. Site plan now acknowledges and does have an easement for that connection for stormwater evacuation from the detention basin. And also there is an easement agreement too for possible construction along here. There will be parking that was alongside the bank that is being removed. And that will not be available any longer, but the bank, rarely do you see any capacity, overcapacity usage in this area. The means of entry will be in the southwest corner. This is going to be a one-way-in-only. And that is because there is a, a basically a sanitation receptacle here for garbage that is being kept and is owned off-site. And that is not being moved. So in order to avoid a traffic conflict, this area down here will be an entry-only in the southwest portion of this parcel. You'll have stormwater detention here. Means of entry will be one-way going around the building. There will be parking as well here for employees. Parking was maxed out because of the potential future uses. That's an issue. Right now, the building will house one unit here for restaurant, another unit here potentially for retail. The remainder will be office and then you have the parking here. There will be a two-way direction here, a means of exit, but a means of entry and exit here in the northwest corner. And then one could come down here, traverse this area. It will require however that they do go back through the pass-through lane here around the building. Landscape plan shows the additional landscaping. There will not be any landscaping that will be permitted to be planted within any easement area. Make sure of that. The area here elevation's showing six units. In fact, there will be pretty much one, two, and then the remaining portion of this will be occupied by a one user. But this shows the front, this shows the rear of the building, and this shows the two different sides of the structure. Staff in evaluating this proposal would make a recommendation for approval as it does be gold C to attract and retain business and industry of the comprehensive plan as stated. And we would make a recommendation for approval with the conditions listed in the report. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from your standpoint since publication?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, there's some things going on behind the scenes here with our quorum and how we're going to have some vote procedures come up here in a little bit. Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. I do have, before I come to the commission, and I don't see Ken out there. He's not going to be here. Okay. From Ken Beck that was directed to City of Betendorf P&amp;Z and Planning dated October 16th. Hello, Greg. We received the notice regarding the updated site plan for the proposed retail development for 2570 Middle Road. Although the text for the report states there will be three units, the architectural drawings show six. Will they be limited to the three or allowed to subdivide in the future to six or more? So hold that thought and I'll keep reading. We have been and are still concerned that the city continues to allow developers to use a single entrance for a multiple number of developments. This entrance was once only for the use of the bank, but now serves as the primary entrance for Hungry Hobo, Baja Tacos. The suites, the lower, and the suites, the lower density development now under consideration, and now three to six more retail stores. Having witnessed and been the recipient of a car landing in our garage, this continued building of volume to single entrance, to a single entrance so close to an already busy intersection will likely result in more accidents and hopefully I am not cutting the grass along the parkway when one happens. Thank you, Ken and Linda Beck. So we'll have that entered into the record as well. So questions and comments from the commission regarding this case? Greg, I had one just for clarification on the site plan. Could you show me exactly where? So I'm clear, the, the entrance is off Middle Road. It's right there. Okay.
To the parcel.
And that is a full intersection. Can cars egressing out of their turn left and go east or north on Middle? Okay.
It is the existing intersection that is there. This is not a new curb cut.
Oh, it's not a new curb.
Oh, it's not a new curb cut.
Yeah, it's the existing entrance. And there's a shared agreement. We went through all that. Yeah, I just wanted to, with all the different lines on there, I want to make sure I was looking at the, the right place. So. And then regarding Ken's question, I had a note of my own, Brent, for you too. At one point, we had talked about a traffic study and/or consideration of a light. Can you shed some light on that?
Very nice.
Yes.
Yes, so there is still an agreement that's, exists between the city and essentially all the property owners there. It was the original developers of the senior living that's in the north, but also applies to Northwest Bank and any of these. That at full build-out, we will conduct a traffic study or if we, it did give us a latitude that if we saw issues, we could do it sooner. We have no accident history out there since any of them, the, the accident that Mr. Beck's referencing, I believe was 15 years ago. It's, it's at least 10 because it's prior to my time at the city. But yes, that is still under consideration and when this does get developed as well as the, I guess they were the condos that, you know, that we approved a couple of years ago that have not started construction yet or have very little construction if it has. Once that's all built out and this is fully developed, so that would also involve this building most likely being occupied, not just being built. Because we don't want to go do a traffic study and have it show us that it's not warranted when we don't have enough traffic being generated to the full build-out. Then the city will conduct that and if warranted, any improvements here or even down at Happy Joe as well will be considered.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious what, what the improvements would be. How could you make that better in that space?
You could, worst case would be a traffic signal. That spacing is almost identical to what we have downtown. It's 325 feet. And you just have to time those basically simultaneously. The nice part is that there is not another signal in close proximity, so you could time them almost identically. And it wouldn't impact anything upstream or downstream, whereas downtown, you know, we have a signal every block. It gets a little more difficult. There's the, the potential for, there is room right away for a left turn lane into there, which could be a potential solution as well to get traffic off the main line. And there is a potential for a left turn lane at Happy Joe as well. But again, those all involve pretty significant widening. So that's the reason.
Good thought, good question. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ian.
Greg, let's talk about parking. So there's nothing in your comments that indicate there's any issues with parking. But when I look at the site development plan, it looks to me like there's a lot of parking in the back. And there's a drive-through lane. I don't know how you can differentiate between employee parking and parking for customers. And if there's an overflow from that parking on the west side and customers are parking in the back, there's no entrance back there. They're going through a drive-through lane. It doesn't, I, I realize there's plenty of parking here, but it doesn't look very safe to me from a pedestrian standpoint. If you're not dashing in the back door of a building.
So, and we've approved almost an identical building at Devil's Glen and Tanglefoot. So the, the strip center there.
The countryside.
Is exactly the same where there's parking on the backside, no entrances on, on that side. It's really no different. When you think of it, you, you see drive-through lane and you think there's going to be more traffic. That's just an access aisle is what that is. It's being shared between people looking for parking and people using it through, but it's no different than if that drive lane is, that we've talked about a lot of times, like Hy-Vee, for example. You know, that drive lane is dead smack in front of the building. Every pedestrian has to cross that. It, it's an access aisle is what it turns into. Now, they have to, you are correct. They will have to use the sidewalk and walk around the perimeter of the building. But it's, it's identical to that building that was approved.
Okay.
A year ago.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, could I add a comment?
Please.
I think Greg never got to answer the question that was proposed to him, so I, we can let Greg answer, but Greg and I actually talked about this this morning in our, in our prep for our cases today. You know, we're not the designers. We're just the reviewers of the code. We thought the same thing, the angled parking in back, having to back out into a double-wide drive lane is not ideal, but it is not against code. And, you know, we, we can't be designer and reviewer. We had those same thoughts. It's going to, it's going to be up to them to make that work and maybe modify or do something different. But they're adequately parked. They're, they have provided adequate access for fire apparatus. Yeah, parking having, obviously I think you're going to require your customers, your, your employees to park in that angled parking because that is going to be very odd getting in and out of there. But odd doesn't make it wrong. It's just different. It's maybe not how we would design it, but we are not the designers. We are just the reviewers.
So was the calculations for three businesses or for six?
It would be by square footage.
Yeah, it was by square footage.
For the full building.
And they're probably showing a max parking scenario so that they can go out and, and bring in whatever type of user they want. Restaurant, bars, which have high parking versus your insurance agency which have a low parking. So.
So an answer, direct answer to Ken Beck's question, will they be limited to the three or allowed to subdivide in the future to six or more? I think I'm hearing you say the answer to that would be yes.
Yeah, it would be like any other multi-tenant commercial building that we review on a build-out permit basis. Probably get more of that.
Yeah, yeah. So the use types that are going to come in are going to get, are going to have to meet parking requirement. Typically what a designer will do in this, this case is, is max park the building so you can bring all those users in. It's just, you know, you kind of build the shell for the biggest possible product and adjust from there.
Yeah. And I asked the same question earlier too. I just, I looked at that and came up with the same conclusion. It wasn't ideal from a design standpoint, but to your point, it's, it complies with the code. I personally wouldn't want to be getting out of my car, crossing two lanes, walking around in the dark to come around the front door. I'd hope they'd throw a door in on the sidewalk in the back if it were a high volume, but yeah. I, I had the same concern, but other comments from the commission?
Just for clarification, clarification of my understanding, are you saying that when we decide, when you're calculating how many parking spots are required per building, it's simply by square foot and not by usage?
It, it's both. It depends. It depends on what they, the information they give us is what we have to go on. So if they come and say, I know I've got a restaurant, I know I've got a a beauty salon, I know I've got, you know, insurance agents, then if they have known users, we, we build off that. If not, if they give us general use types, then we, we build a parking calculation off those general use types, which is usually like the max parking scenario. And my interpretation here is that this is kind of built at max parking scenario so they can bring any and all comers in to locate within that, within that structure.
Thanks.
So we also keep a, a running tally as they do build out. So a good example would be the multi-tenant building over behind Whitey's on Devil's Glen.
Yes.
So I don't remember, Mark, if you had actually started at that point, but there were a couple of build-outs at the end of that. Like the last two units where we actually had to reject users because they did not have enough allowable parking to bring that use in. So if you have three prospective units here and you bring two restaurants on first and you don't have enough parking for that third unit, you have to find a use that complies with how many you have left.
True. Thank you.
Good. Yep. Others in the commission?
Just one real quick comment. I mean, really, this is not related to planning and zoning, but I just wanted to see why they would have just entry only to the south entry into the lot and have both entry and exit on the north entry into the lot. So I mean, there would be.
They are both two-way. You might just not be able to see the arrow at that.
When I zoom in, it says entry only.
I'm guessing that's because of the angled parking on the backside.
I think the engineer is here.
Yeah, Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants. Yeah, so that is one-way only on the south side because of two things really. One is it, it, it does go towards the one-way and around the back. But secondly, there is a existing trash enclosure just south of that driveway that's been in place for some time now. That was creating site distance issues if we had somebody coming out at that driveway, not being able to see to the left. And we didn't, it was commented on and we didn't think it was a safe condition either. So that'll be just an in-only so you don't have any concerns with that site distance with the trash enclosure there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this case? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name's Tammy Spidey. I live at 2592 Middle Road, Suite 121. So part of the suites of Betendorf. I think a lot of folks here are from the suites and have some concerns. We did look at the Scott County website and as mentioned before, those lines aren't exact. And so our concern, there's a couple of them, but there's a, a well-established tree line on the north side of that property. We have asked our developers, we asked Switch Homes when they came into a presentation to us, what the intent was with those trees and we can't get a very good answer. The developer has not answered whether those trees are on the piece of property that's owned by the suites or not. But if those trees are taken down, we're going to have a considerable amount of road noise and noise from those establishments, particularly if it's a bar or a restaurant that allows outside seating. Additionally, any dumpsters that they place there, we would be able to view. And especially now that we understand that that north entrance exit is the only one that's two-way. Our road to the north is private property and we already see a fair amount of traffic traversing through there, whether they're headed out Tech Drive or where, where their ultimate goal is because you can only go around our building to Happy Joe Drive. And so that is a little bit concerning because having that be the only way out would seem to encourage traffic through our private drive and out that building. So I guess our question really from the developer, whomever is, what's the intent with that tree line? You know, it prevents noise from the road, trash that would blow over sightlines and things like that. And also it, it really provides a clear indication of separation from where the commercial to where our multi-residential is. So. I'm guessing you're the man with all the answers tonight.
I can try to address it. I'm certainly not the owner developer, but I can tell you on that there are trees along that northwest corner and the north line on Switch's property in which this is going to end, that the, those trees will need to go to get that paving in and that grading to do. So I know those trees will go, anything, you know, obviously beyond their property line is not a, a part of this project. So, but trees along that north side within their property, yes, most likely.
Those are all going to come down.
Most likely will come down. Yes.
Is that staked out there now? Can they see clearly where the property line is now?
I honestly don't know anymore. It's been, it's been a while since we've staked it. So I am not sure. We could certainly do so though and, and get that reestablished for you to, to know where that property and those property lines are for sure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, Greg Beck, to clarify what is, what his analysis of the, of the landscape plan was and where that, where that came out.
Sure. Yeah, that would be appropriate. We're going to get a comment about the landscape plan for the development.
You mean the trees, Mark?
Yes, sir. The landscape plan that you reviewed.
Yeah, there, there will not be, those trees will not be a part of this. They will come out.
And what about the total tree factors, Greg? Are they meeting that?
Yeah. They may have to, they may have to remove these trees here though and then place them elsewhere because they're right in, there's an easement through here. So they're going to have to, we'll verify it anyway to see if they do meet the required tree factor, but this is going, these will have to come out for certain because there is an easement through there.
If those trees that are in that front easement can't go there, would there be room to put them at the rear of the property, the north boundary of the property to, to help with this, with this issue? Was there not enough room? I don't, I'm kind of looking at the engineer. It's pretty tight.
Right here, it's pretty tight, but there is a tree shown here.
Trying to, trying to meet all interests here, you know, if, if there was an easy button, that's what I'm trying to find.
The only thing, Mark, I would add that if the developer was willing and if staff considered it, the vintage property does come all the way down to that north property line. If you were willing to trade some of those trees to actually be planted on the vintage property. Because that's the only location at this point. property, because that's the only location at this point, there is not enough green space on the property itself.
Yeah, so they'd meet the landscape plan on, on the adjoining property, but still meet the intent of what I think is a very reasonable objection by the neighbors about preserving some tree line between commercial and residential.
Well, I'm hearing that kind of solves two issues, not enough space for the trees, but you get to keep the trees, but they're on your property.
Or reallocate.
Reallocate, relocate. Am I saying that right, Mark, then?
Yeah, yeah, and really, I mean, we're, we're kind of doing the dance live here.
Yeah.
I feel like we have a reasonable request and just trying to, I was trying to find the easy button, I thought, oh, this is gonna be fine, we'll just move the ones from the front to the back, not quite enough room, but maybe an offline meeting could occur and we could encourage that offline meeting to occur between this developer and the property to the north about how they might accommodate some of those landscaping needs. They're already gonna have to buy trees for the landscape if they would be willing to just put them in, Vintage was willing to accept them onto their property, maybe that makes everybody happy and we get a win-win.
I like the concept. I see people nodding their heads out there.
All right, we do have a board, so we would have to include them as well, but...
But I think that's a great potential solution that gives you guys or maintains a tree line, you ultimately get control of the trees on your property and the developer still gets to use the full space. I think everybody wins if that could work.
Yeah, and I think that's, I don't know that we have the legal authority to require this, but we have really good relationships with this engineering firm, we certainly know a vintage co-op.
Makes way too much sense not to go that way.
So I think if we could just encourage that discussion to occur and then staff could, at a staff level, approve that, you know, that very minor change to the landscape plan and still allow this project to keep moving forward tonight.
I just gotta say, in this crazy world, I'm glad to hear something that makes sense for a change. Yeah.
You have somebody at the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carol Brunner, and I am also a resident at the Suites 2592 Middle Road. In response to the trees, I would have no objection, however, those trees are very old and very large, I doubt that they could be transplanted
Right.
anywhere. It would have to be new growth.
Right, I would expect that as well.
And if you plant skinny little trees, they'll be dead before you, they're growing up. So that would be one of my concerns. The other thing is, we talked about one-way entrance, but we never talk about how they're getting out of there. And the property that's behind for the condos that was approved, they are allowing excess parking in the northwest parking lot. So that is also gonna be a lot of congestion when people try to leave. We leave usually by that bank parking lot, but now you're telling us we can't use that entrance because it's gonna be a one-way entrance coming in off of Middle Road. So we have to go out.
I'm gonna pause you right there, we're gonna clarify that. It's, the one-way is not off Middle Road, it's into the facility.
Into the lot.
After you're into your, so you're coming off Middle Road, you come in, that's still two ways, all directions, then you make the right-hand turn to go east into this property, that's what will be one-way.
Oh, that's the one-way, okay.
He's gonna put it up in the diagram there a little bit, we'll just make sure that's clarified.
And then what is the exit that you're looking, well, they can go out back out Middle Road, but they probably will want to come back, go right and come across our parking lot and go out Happy Joe Drive, which will probably be an easier exit for them or try to go through, cross that parking lot, which will have, has lots of cars in it, and go out the Spruce Hills exit. So that is a concern.
Okay, and just take a look at the lower left-hand corner of the map down there where he was moving a little hand around, right down there, that's the, Middle Road is going diagonally and that's the entrance right there, that will be two directions. And then when you get up, go up, move up a little, Mark, or Greg, up to where the driveway, no, farther down for the driveway.
With the one-way entrance.
Right there, that's what's one-way, it shows two arrows going in, that's gonna be only in, they've got to loop around the building to come out.
I see.
Then they can go both directions
Okay.
once they're out there, and then go back to Middle Road if they, it'll depend, frankly, on which way they're going, right? If they're, if they're going westbound or south, whichever we call Middle Road at that point, nobody would probably want to drive all the way around your building to get out to go back the other direction, but if they were going back to the north or east on Middle Road, potentially, but that's, that's a long, slow way around instead of just hitting the entrance.
If they go slow, most of the people that come through there do not go slow.
Yeah.
So if we can get some landscaping, we would really appreciate, because we can't get any landscaping for the condo project, that is, we're gonna be looking at the backs of their buildings.
Yeah.
But if we can get some screening at this, we would really appreciate that.
I think you need to go to the meeting and explain to them that you want them big enough so they'll be big enough before you change locations.
We haven't met with the developer, we have tried many times, he doesn't seem willing to meet with us. We have met with representatives who can't give us answers when we make suggestions and we never hear back.
Well, Brian, I'll get you fixed up over there, yep.
I, I would appreciate that if that was true.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that, yeah, I definitely will follow up with the developer-owner with regards to trees, I agree, that seems like a, certainly a great solution for everybody, there's room there. As noted on our property, there really isn't a room with the paving, there's also a sanitary sewer easement runs through there, so we have another issue with the trees on an easement, but 100% will take this to the developer-owner and try to get this resolved for everybody.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, last call in the audience with regard to this case? Going, going, gone, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23-012, site development plan for 2570 Middle Road, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-012, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you. 23-012 is recommended for approval, which will take us then to 23-062, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, this is a development that involves approximately four buildings at 253 Fifth Street. Applicant is Mike Janasek of Martin and Whittaker Surveyors. Eighth Street is the means of getting to this site down 35th Street across railway tracks, and this is the structure here, this is where Civier is right here to give you an idea of how close it is approximately. This is the lot of record here, Lot 1 of Frymore and Hagerty First Edition. The area is all I-3 general, or rather, heavy industrial district, and typically it would require a 50-foot setback off of 35th Street. Variance was granted by the Board of Adjustment, a 20-foot setback in this area. That is somewhat indicative of what you see, there's one also for Barton Solvents, both these cases were here the same night before the board, but many of these areas have already received setbacks reducing the front yard setback area to 20 feet, there are many different businesses down here. Some cases, some of these buildings have been constructed without any variance at all, and they are just constructed within 20 feet of the right-of-way line. Puzzles for warehouse, contractor condos and indoor storage and all those uses are permitted within this zoning district. Future land use, the entire area is made up of industrial and it's been that way for several decades. Plot that governs this area is this one here, Frymore and Hagerty First Edition, this is Lot 1, this is where the construction will take place. There is an access easement here, this is going to be extended so that it is tangential to Lot 1, so it'll permit access to come in and then there will be circulation. The 20-foot outline area is right here, they'll give you an idea of the ratio of what this used to be is setback in the blue, and then the green area shows now the reduction to where that setback will be. This area here is sanitary sewer and recreational trail easement area, none of that can be built upon at all. What we have for the site development plan are four buildings, this structure here is primarily going to be a warehouse, this will be some type of storage here, and then these two here will be some type of self-storage or contractor condos, these two buildings. You have a means of access that is permitted to come across the easement into the site. There's another area right here for accessing, and then there's other circulation down here with the extension of that access easement on Lot 2 of this addition. And these are the variety of structures that are in the offing, this is the self-storage type design, we've got contractor condos here, and then we have other types of warehousing also, as shown in these two. Landscape plan, the tree factor was met with 12 interspersed throughout the area, we'll make sure, again, no planning within easement areas. And they, again, will not block any line of sight, we'll make sure of that as well. This is a view, again, of the site, here's the railway, this is a recreational trail right here, as you can see, coming down, then it connects, and then that recreational trail extends down 35th Street. And this is the site right here, it's been cleaned up, the photo that was in the packet was a photo that was a month older, this is the most recent photo showing that number of the industrial type materials, and there also is some type of industrial infrastructure that was left here, all that has been since removed from the locale and making the site ready for further development. Staff recommends approval of the site development plan in that it meets Goal C, which is to attract, attract and retain business and industry. And with the provisions that are also here listed as conditions in this report, we would ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this site development plan. Are there any questions?
Oh, thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything from your perspective since presentation or publication?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do apologize for some interruption you're seeing in the background, I'm short-staffed today, so we are doing some things that we don't normally
Understood.
during the meeting, so
Yep.
It's not that I'm not paying attention, I'm trying to get some other things ready for you.
You already came up with one profound idea, so you're good for the night, so, yep, good. All right, questions and comments regarding this case from the commission, please? No? All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this case?
Wow.
Wow, you guys are hungry, want to go home, I don't know. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 23-062, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-062, site development plan for warehousing and contractor condos. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you, 23-062 is recommended for approval. Nice to see some development down there, too, so, yeah, great. All right, Greg, 23-067.
Mr. Chairman, this is a redevelopment of a hobby lobby site at 2119 Kimberly Road, and it's going to be the first stage of what will be some other type development going into this locale. Access is met by coming in off of Kimberly, and there are two points in which one can enter the location right now. The applicant is Kevin Kellner, Focus Development, and the intended use is for what would be a drive-up and pickup point for what will be designed as daycare, if you want to call it that, we do have it for adults, it's a daycare center, if you will. Zoning is C2, which permits this use within this area. The surrounding zoning is all C2, and then it's buffered essentially by the Duck Creek Golf Course on the west, and then on the east side, you have the interstate. Land use is pretty much the same, we do have a community commercial throughout and then in the northwestern part of the area, and then public and semi-public to further to the north. This is the parcel breakdown, this is not a lot of record, so what you see in the blue here is essentially what is owned by the current corporation. This is the site itself, and it's pretty much a meets and bounds lot. This is a small version of what is going on, essentially, you have a, an awning, if you will, being put over this entry point so that people can circulate, traffic will come through here, and then people will be dropped off and picked up from this location. The tree factor count two is minimal, but it was met with four. This is the building plan, this is the entire building right here, and the area shaded here in blue is what is being renovated, essentially. This is the area in blue right here, and it shows you the interior, what is taking place is part of this overall renovation of the building, but this is stage one of that renovation. Staff interviewing the proposal, looked at it as meeting, track and retain business and industry, and also Goal F to promote recreational and cultural activity. And staff would make a recommendation for approval with the two conditions that are listed in the recommendation, I would ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one of the things I was working on getting updated for you during this presentation was, we did receive one comment from a neighbor, I would like to read that comment to the record.
Sure.
It's very short, and I think, given the presentation that's been given here, this commenter will be relieved to understand what is coming, so when they wrote this, they obviously didn't have the information that was just presented. This is from Cameron Yosef. Good afternoon, my name is Cameron Yosef, I'm the elected secretary of the, for the Muslim community of the Quad Cities. Regarding the planning and rezoning of 2119 Kimberly Road, I would like to advise the commission that our religious organization is located as neighbors. Our address, 2115 Kimberly Road, Bettendorf, Iowa 52722. Some things to consider when considering planning and zoning, and I have a bold pointed list, I'll read those off to you. We have a religious worship prayer five times per day, sunrise till sunset, schools held on Sundays from 9:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. from October to May, 50 to 75 children are present regularly on our property, Muslims do not drink alcohol or eat pork, we have a family-oriented environment, please consider these when deciding the zoning of 2119 Kimberly Road. It would seem to me, a little bit of commentary, but the adult day facility not gonna be an alcohol-use facility, not gonna be a restaurant that's gonna be serving pork, maybe they'll have meals during the day for the residents that are there, but not, not that restaurant environment that they may have been fearful of, or bar environment that they may have been fearful of understandably, and just wanted to make sure that was entered into the record, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, questions and comments from the commission regarding this case? I had one. How much, there's a huge parking lot out there, million spaces, so how much of that is dedicated or allocated to this use, and is it identified, or is it like, hey, there's tons of it?
Our analysis was pretty, most of these people that will be attending will be drop-off, a drop-off situation, maybe some type of paratransit provision, so they've got plenty of parking, they've got as much as they'll ever need, we don't have a real, you know, smart analysis to give you.
Well, I'm seeing outlots out there for other uses, there's a lot of unused property out there, yeah.
And I think that's still the intent, for sure, is
Okay, yeah.
Essentially, at this point, they would have all the parking because they're the only use of the building. But, you know, obviously, there is still a fair amount of the building to come, and I still think the developer is trying to pursue potentially a use out front.
Yeah, that makes sense, sure, okay. Others? Okay, anyone in the audience with regard to this case? Nope, all right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 23-067, subject to staff approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-067, site development plan for medical facility with exterior addition, subject to staff recommendations, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you, 23-067 is recommended for approval, which takes us, Greg, to 23-070.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, duly noted.
Mr. Chairman, this is case 23070, and it's essentially the north side of Forest Grove Drive, 4200 to 4500 block, and it's just due east of the TVK Sports Complex. And as you can see in this outlined area, this is the parcel that this body had looked at regarding rezoning, as we see here, which is in process now, this area... This area here going from essentially over here at A1 to R5, and then the remaining portion going from A1 to C3, as you can see outlined here. Here's the R5 portion. Here's the C3. And the land use again being amended so that this is urban high intensity here, going from urban medium intensity to accommodate both of these zoning classes. And that went through city council last night as a public hearing and first reading. Here again is the concept and staging in what we will see is the multifamily probably come first. And then this will probably be second to commercial and the rest of this layout will just depend on, you know, the customer, I should say, the economy, as well as the people who will be approached potentially to come into this area. But again, it breaks out to R5 here and then C3. Preliminary plat is on the left here, and you have Competition Drive running through here. And then you have International Drive here. We did talk with the developer earlier in the week, and I believe the city engineer has stated that there needs to be a little change here perhaps with this area here at 90 degree angle, if I'm not mistaken, that we may see a little bit of a different design here because it just seems to end right here. This is the proposed right of way going on over here throughout this part of the subdivision. So it's being staged in this area here. The remaining part of this is going to be approaching rather quickly. There's also the aspect too that there, as you see this section here of the subdivision, that there's a sanitary sewer right now, and there's an agreement perhaps that the city will have with the developer on figuring this through. And there's a timing mechanism with this connected further south of Forest Grove Drive. And that's going to be an element in approving the overall site build out. Staff in recommending approval would say that this meets goal C to attract and retain business and industry and also goal D to provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods as found in the comprehensive plan as well. Well, we have four conditions that are listed here along with our recommendation for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate the presentation. Mark, anything?
I'm gonna play city attorney just for a second because this is the one that we have a little bit of interesting voting scenario on. I believe that Samir or Mr. Qurani, I should say, will be recusing himself from this decision. And you have a quorum once you started the meeting with four of you here. And I have via text message and via phone call confirmed with City Attorney Curran that the remaining three of you can vote, and that is a legal binding vote of a legal meeting because you started with a quorum. You have one person recused, the remaining members vote, and that vote is the the ruling vote of the day for this item.
Thank you for the clarification and confirmation. Good question to ask in the first place.
Roy, can I clarify just a couple of quick things that Greg said? On the sewer, what Greg was talking about is since this is a fairly large chunk of ground, the city bases our commitments to developers on basically what we would consider more of a standard product. So that's an eight inch sewer main, for example. If you have to build a larger sewer to handle that or accommodate something upstream of you, the city pays the upcharge. So that's what Greg was charging was talking about, and that it may end up being a 10 inch sewer. And then on that north end of International, you'll see this against preliminary plat, but you'll see really what he's talking about is how much they're going to probably plat in the initial final plat that comes through. Probably won't extend that far. And if it does, we are still working with the developer whether anything heading east would be private or public. So things will get worked out, but again, it's preliminary plat, but that's what he was referring to.
Yeah, good. Thanks for the insight. Questions or comments from the three of us?
I have one question, Greg. In the body of the document that we reviewed, it says the concept plan configuration may change. My interpretation of that, based upon what you just told us, is that conceptual changes are in the area that are not part of the first phase, correct?
Right here.
Okay, so we know what's happening now.
Here.
We have a concept plan for the first phase. Okay.
Yeah, very similar to what we did with TVK right next door.
Yeah, it's evolving.
And FG80. I think between those two subdivisions, we had nine additions. Actually, maybe 10. I think we have six Betplex and four FG80 that as users come in, we have to adjust property lines and continue to plat.
I just want to make sure I interpreted that correctly.
Remember, we're talking, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, we're talking like 60 acres here.
63, I think.
So having 61 acres completely planned out conceptually in your mind and having every user identified. Bethendorf's a pretty great town. We attract a lot of businesses, but that's a that's a pretty big onus to put on the
Others in the commission? Anyone else in the audience with regard to this? We're thinning out out there. Okay, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 23-070, subject to any staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-070, Forest Grove Landing Preliminary Plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 23-070 is recommended for approval. Okay, that takes us to 23061.
Mr. Chairman, this is a subdivision that has gone through some changes to some extent. The area outlined here is the entirety of what they intend to plat. And this is all zone now R3. Land use is split between these two land uses, essentially urban low intensity or remedial intensity, but it does permit the R3 zoning designation. Initially, this is what the preliminary plat was laying out. And you can see these larger units here. These have been reduced, but the lots now they've been split, so there's two extra lots here. When this was zoned, the condition in the zoning dealt with the townhouses, not the duplexes, not these larger single family units, not any of the single family units. It dealt with the townhouses and saying that the design as shown in the concept plan must materially be represented within plating and later on the site development plan that would be required for those townhouse units. This is the initial plat that they had submitted showing these two larger lots. They're submitting tonight is a splitting and making these units smaller that would fit on here. And they're all single family in this area. These are duplexes here. This is all townhouses in this area, and then you have some duplexes here, and then the remainder again is single family. So you're seeing that they're following the intent of the zoning in this breakout. Staff in looking at this final plat sees that it follows goal D of the cop plan to provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods and goal G to attract young people. And when we look at the type of housing that we are getting, more of it is being of a denser nature. And you are seeing some of the larger lots being reduced, and it's a cost factor now that many of these folks are facing. We would also say too that we would not need the 35 foot buffer along here any longer in the subdivision because this is not any longer a multifamily type development along an arterial or collector's street and an R3 district and a single family now. But in lieu of that, there is a requirement to buffer all types of housing along Criswell Street being a collector because this is a double frontage lot that they either follow the ordinance provision in 12-285, which is to have a 20 foot wide planting strip, or that they provide a fence with an evergreen tree outside the area, or depending on how far back the fence is here, 15 feet. It's 15 feet back in the property line, they don't need to provide an evergreen type tree in this area. Given those conditions, staff would recommend approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you again, Greg. Mark, anything to add? Nope. All right. Questions from the commission or comments?
My question would be, how many times can one project change?
Quite a few.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
Can you clarify the turnaround recommendation again in this particular final?
Where they have these designated here at the end of each? Yeah. Those will have to meet the standards of the fire department, but to be constructed in such a manner that the compaction of whatever the material is being used will support the weight of a fire apparatus.
So Greg, those are actually.
Temporary.
Those aren't fire. They're for garbage and snowplows for us to turn around. If fire ever did have to use it as well, but generally it's an eight or a 10 inch aggregate pad and kind of a half size cul-de-sac essentially, but it allows our garbage trucks, which are the ones we really don't want to have to back up to be able to turn around.
Other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience with regard to this matter? No? Okay. Back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval, case 23-061, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-061, Hope Heights First Edition Final Plant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 23-061 is recommended for approval, which believe takes us to commission updates.
Just a thanks, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things to put in your calendar. At your next regular scheduled meeting, we will do under commission update and perhaps earlier in the agenda, just depending how things fall out, an update on the Conference of Land Use Plan that we've been talking about and working with you on. So we're going to give you another touch at that. That's all. That'll be on the 15th of November. On the 20th of November, we're going to have our public open house, which you're welcome to attend as well, but staff will be covering that meeting and we'll be sharing more with the public, you as well if you like, to talk about the Conference of Land Use Plan update. And that is my commission update.
What time would that be on the 20th?
That's a fair question. We're going to say we think 6 o'clock.
Is it at the waterfront?
Yeah, at the waterfront. Yeah. And all that is on our our website that we have dedicated to the Conference of Plan. We'll do, we'll be doing the Facebook, all the social medias updating as well and the city website as well.
Perfect, thank you. Absent any objection or adjourn?